This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening. It is now six o'clock and we have a quorum. I'll call the City of Manassas Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, where we are, indivisible, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all. And before we start this evening, if we could take a moment to reflect on the legacy of Martin Luther King? Thank you. If we could have a roll, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Here.
Alderman Tomgady?
Here.
Alderman Tedgady?
Here.
Alderman Opella?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevigny?
Here.
Alderman Langdon?
Here.
All are present.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a temporary suspension of the rules. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we temporarily suspend the rules of the Common Council and the mayor so that we can use our electronic devices during this tele web conference.
Second that.
Haley, did you catch if there was a second?
I second that, Mayor.
Okay, I couldn't tell who it was.
Alderman Taylor is...
There's a motion, a second by Alderman Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion carries. Item F is the report of department heads, staff, and consultants. Director McKinney is up first with our COVID-19 update. Director McKinney? Director McKinney, do you have your mic on as well?
I do, I do. Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and start with some case counts. This is as of yesterday, the 17th, 2021. Please excuse that typo. We have 1,604 laboratory confirmed cases, 162 probable cases, 73 active, 1,716 recovered, 7,026 negative test results. We have 90 people that have been hospitalized. We saw a spike last week, and we have one additional fatality to report, bringing the city's totals to date to 17 fatalities. Our weekly summary, in the last two weeks, we've gone from 66 cases to 107 cases. That's a 38% increase. The case rate has increased from 376.9 cases per 100,000 population to 611.1 case per 100,000. And this case rate is used across the state to compare us with other communities. Our activity level is classified as very high. So when you look at the case rate, you can compare our communities, our adjacent communities. Manassas is at 611.1, City of Appleton 700, Calumet County is 611.9, Outagami is at 726.9, Winnebago at 455.3, and the state at 622.3. We're all in the very high category. Outagami County last week was at a growing rate. So this is, we've looked at this for quite some time now, and you can see the large spike that occurred just around Labor Day when school was back in session, and now has come down appreciably around Thanksgiving, just post Thanksgiving. And we were very encouraged because we actually dipped just prior to school decisions for reopening, we dipped into the high category at 314 per 100,000. Now it's creeping back up a bit, and I would suspect that some of that is due to the post-holiday spike. So we're continuing to watch that. Then this is just a little different look at the chart that I've showed you in the past, probably a bit less busy for you, but we do something called a seven-day rolling average. We do that for the number of cases per day called a case incidence. We are in the red zone as far as our Harvard metrics go. That's 49.3 new cases per 100,000 per day. Our goal is less than one. Our seven-day average test positivity is 28.9. Our goal is to get down under 5%, 5% or less. I would be happy if we got down to the yellow area, which is closer to 10% or under. We do have the average number of tests per day in the green, so we're actually doing an adequate number of testing. Our goal is 28. We've gone above that. But what that's telling me is that there is a lot of circulating virus. We also look at our hospitalizations. I've talked with you about that before because we want to make sure we have capacity for all people to be treated for the different things that they come to hospitals with. We're at 83.5 hospital beds occupied, our 83.9 are ICU beds, and 9.8 beds occupied by patients with COVID-19. That puts us in the yellow. When we look at the green area for the percent hospital inpatient beds, we want to be below 80%. And then for the intensive care unit beds, we would like to be in the green area below 80. And then percent of inpatient beds in the community that are occupied by COVID patients, we would like to be in the dark green at 5% or less. So we do have a little ways to go here. We looked at how we have been advising the school district and we're using a similar method for the city. This is based on the Harvard key metrics for COVID-19 suppression. And what this particular chart shows is that our burden on the left, the blue and the up to the light green and medium green area, that's the state level. And when I talked to you earlier about we are at, I believe it was 469, we're right here in this very high area. It's not the state's critical area, that would be 1,000 for 100,000, but it is in the Harvard red zone. And technically, they do say that people should be at home if we're in that area. So our recommendations would be consistent with the state that in this area, people should be masking up, distanced by at least six feet, making sure they're not gathering in crowds outside of their household indoors, and then also looking at making sure that we do disinfection and so forth. So indoors, we want to make sure that we're with our household members. When you go out into the open, you have your gatherings less than 10. That's the recommendation. The number of laboratory confirmed cases by age, it is a little bit higher in this 20 and above 20 to 39 group than it had been in the past. And the previous week, actually, it was higher than that. So we're going to keep an eye on that. It looks as though we have a few more cases in this 60-plus group as well. And those are the most vulnerable individuals that we want to protect. So we're keeping our eye on that. We do have community testing still available. So if people are experiencing symptoms of COVID-19, they should be tested. Or if they are close contact of someone who has a case of COVID-19, they should be tested. And testing can be done in these locations. Data Care Physicians in Nina, Data Care Mobile Unit in various locations. We have one at Christ the Rock Church that comes every Thursday, and the registration is on our website. The Sunny View Expo Center in Oshkosh is still open. And Fox City's Exhibition Center is a Wisconsin Army National Guard site. When you see the wing, that's Wisconsin Army National Guard, and they'll be available till through March. And then UW-Oshkosh Culver Family Welcome Center. All of this is listed on our website for the Health Department, so you can refer to that. And those links just bring you to the areas where you can get more information about how to register for an appointment. I wanted to take a minute and talk about the emerging variants for COVID-19. There's three lineages, they call them, that have been identified. One is in the United Kingdom, one is in South Africa, and another in Nigeria. And I believe tonight we have an additional one to report. So, you know, keep your eye on this. What we're concerned about, so viruses do have the potential to mutate, and so it's not an unexpected thing that happens, but we want to make sure that we can use all of the mitigation strategies that we're talking about to protect people because they have the ability to spread more quickly, they can cause milder or more serious severe disease, evade detection by our tests, and have decreased susceptibility to therapeutics. And we want to make sure that the vaccine we're using helps to keep us protected from the mutated viruses. And what we have found on the one that's been identified recently in Wisconsin, that it is more transmissible, but it is thought not to cause more severe disease, and it is thought to be covered by the current vaccine. But we're still learning, and we want to make sure that we keep an eye on these variants. And then, let's see what else in this area. Vaccination update. We have talked about this, that the Manassas Health Department is a designated vaccinator, and we have vaccinated. We started last week, the 11th, 12th, and 13th, to administer our first doses to NINA-Mannassia Fire and Rescue, who are emergency medical responders, home healthcare agencies that aren't affiliated with pharmacies, because generally they are, but this particular one wasn't. So we assisted by vaccinating them. We also had dental clinic personnel and free clinic personnel, so we were happy to be able to do that last week. In vaccine, there are phases that we are going to be working through. Again, we are in Phase 1A, which is our healthcare personnel and long-term care facility residents and our emergency medical responders. And now we have been given the go-ahead to begin vaccinating police officers. That'll be this week, along with designated personnel in the school district who are within the 1A category that they, in their work at the Manassas Joint School District. The Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices looks over for the country, actually, for CDC, came out with recommendations, and they said Phase B would be people who are 75 years or older and frontline essential workers. Our state medical advisory committee distributed a document because they actually go through all of the categories that this advisory committee from CDC puts together and then makes recommendations for our state. They actually looked at 1B as 70 years and older, and now I'm hearing that they're maybe 65 and older. They are taking comments through today, I believe, and then they will be coming back with revised documents that will guide us through our next steps. And then 1C is 65 to 74 years with high-risk medical conditions and other essential workers. So we're quite busy right now with all of our partners. And you can see Fire and Rescue, and I want to give a shout out to Kevin Kline, Chief Kline, and also with their workers that allowed us to take photos of this. It's pretty historic. And I've got to say, our staff was quite excited, and we actually did have a media press release that we put out around this. But in the next phases, we're working very closely with the Fox Valley Healthcare Emergency Readiness Coalition. They're in the role of matchmaker with these entities along with us. So if there are more agencies or entities that can be vaccinated, we actually have a system where it is placed, their names are placed on a list, not individuals, but agencies. And then the healthcare systems and the health departments and pharmacies will take those when they have space available. So they're the matchmakers. And then we are coordinating with the City of Appleton, Calumet, Outagami, and Winnebago County Health Departments, along with the area healthcare systems, namely Ascension and Data Care, and the pharmacies, and this HERC, this Wisconsin Health Emergency Readiness Coalition, to do mass vaccination clinics. We can't possibly do all of this at the Health Department here in Manassas. We will need to work with our partners to leverage all of our resources. So, I mean, we have very strong working relationships with them, and we're going through some of the cases right now. As you can well imagine, this is a big undertaking. We're talking a two-dose series. So if you can double the amount that we need to have available and double the resources that we have to have, this is what we're facing. But doing this with our partners, everyone having a role and everybody contributing maximizes all of our community resources and energies. We began doing vaccination, and what I'd like to just quickly share with you is that we will be giving you an update on what we do in the Manassas Health Department. And as we get the mass vaccination clinics up and running, we'll be able to give you a briefing on how many we do. This past week, we did 98. They're automatically scheduled for the second dose. And I said, as I said, this is a very, this is the 1A group of healthcare workers and other providers. And so we were just thrilled to get this underway, and we'll be very happy to share our progress. So I would like to encourage the community. Although it's very encouraging to have the vaccine, the reality is that it's going to take us a while to get the vaccine to the population. And we need to remain vigilant. And I know that's hard because we all want this over with, right? I really don't want to be wearing a mask. I want to be seeing people in person. But we've come this far, and I think we have just a little ways to go yet. And if we can really help protect our most vulnerable and ourselves, we can see each other come out at the other end of this pandemic, strong and healthy. So that's our goal. And thank you for the time.
Anyone have questions for Nancy?
Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Nancy, I still just have a problem with all of this. I think that in the future, they ever do a documentary about this virus, the biggest issue is going to be the fact of the matter that the vaccine wasn't handled properly. I just do not understand how we are not vaccinating people on a multi-level other than if we're not getting the vaccine. It just, you're celebrating vaccinating 98 people. Whoopie do, as far as I'm concerned. I think we need to start moving forward. I know we're just one little small community, but I am really fed up with the fact that the vaccine is not available throughout this country, especially with all the time that we've had with this virus. And that I think that by this time, you should be in the hundreds and not just under 100 people that you've vaccinated by now. And that's just my opinion. I'm sorry, I had to go out there, but...
I mean, I will comment here because, you know...
Have we had problems with getting the vaccine? Have we had issues with getting more vaccine?
As our Health Department agreed to be a vaccinator and agreed to certain conditions. And one of the conditions is that we can't move from phase to phase without the state giving us the go-ahead. We have to order the vaccine a week in advance, so therefore we need to identify quickly who's in those categories. And when we identify them, they have to commit to coming in because once we open a vial, we don't want to waste that vaccine, right? We have a system now where if we were to open a vial or if there were additional vaccine, we can get that off to a pharmacy quickly or off to another healthcare entity. But the fact of the matter is, it is slower than expected. And I believe you're correct that the whole nation was anticipating we'd be much further along, and we're not. So I can't disagree with you there. But in reality, as a vaccinator and as an entity that promised to play by the rules, I can't jump ahead. And I wish, I wish I could. The other thing we have to keep in mind is that...
But what I keep hearing, Nancy, on the national level, is that we don't have enough people out there to vaccinate. To me, that's bunk in our community. We could do it. That's where I have a problem.
We do have...
But we keep gearing everything towards one type of vaccine. And there's another vaccine where you don't have to do the double dose.
Well, actually, there's two that are...
Johnson and Johnson has another one that's coming out soon, and we should just be rolling this stuff out. 100? We're happy with 100? I'm not.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I do think that we have to look at also, there are two vaccines that were approved for emergency use authorization. One is Pfizer, one is Moderna. We aren't sure what we're getting when we order. They are both two-dose series, and you are correct. There are several that, you know, probably will be one dose. I don't know when they will be approved, but that certainly will help move things along if we get that approval. But long and short of it is, it's a big undertaking, and we're doing the very best we can at this time. And there are certain constraints that we have as a Health Department. I think we all wish we were a little further along, but a lot of it is dependent on the amount of vaccine we get and the restrictions on managing the actual vaccine when we get it to make sure that we get it out the door.
By the way, that wasn't my dog. Thank you, Nancy.
You're welcome.
Seeing no one else, James?
Thank you. Nancy, I agree with Alderman Sevigny, and, you know, especially that we have our own Health Department. And I think we should be further along the way than other communities that don't have Health Departments. I think that would be a benefit of having a Health Department is that we can get ahead of the curve on this and maybe require more vaccines. And certainly with our first responders and other people, maybe we can, you know, get them trained to do this and to help move forward with this vaccination. And so...
I think you can see by looking at the slide that I showed with what we're able to do with our small staff right now, the advantage of working with other Health Departments, working with other healthcare entities, that we will be able to actually make up ground and get a lot more people vaccinated. So I think what we want to do is maximize our community resources and work collaboratively as well as working within our Health Department to be able to provide vaccines.
And I also noticed that all the governors were on the news last week that said they were promised all these vaccines, and they don't have them. So I see there was a problem at the federal level with this, and hopefully we get those bumps out. But how much could our Health Department vaccinate a day? How many people could we do a day?
Well, it depends on how many people we have and the capacity to be able to have this space to do it in our Health Department. One of the things that is good news is that I was just informed that we will be getting additional funding for vaccination. So I'll be coming back to you with a request to spend it on vaccinators and a team. But that team is going to also be working with our community, as I said. I think we would be very short-sighted to try to do everything ourselves here. We don't have that capacity. We can do approximately 12 vaccines an hour per person, per vaccinator. But there is more to it than you can imagine. We need somebody to drop the vaccine. We need somebody to educate. That can be the same person, and we need a vaccinator. Then we have an observation station because they have to be watched for anywhere from 15 to 30 minutes. So it isn't as quick as just coming and lining people up and giving the vaccine. We also have to be careful that we have people separated by a six-foot distance at this time. It's not like your typical vaccine. It is different, and a lot of thought goes into it. And so we're talking about having a team of people work on vaccination, not just one or two nurses in the Health Department. Or like we do with our mass vaccination clinic where we set up stations, that's another alternative. We also, one of the beauties, having the UW-Oshkosh nursing students with us is tapping into their skills and resources as well. So, you know, we have all of those options available to us to use and are actively pursuing that, as well as the, we have a Wisconsin Emergency Assistance Program that where people can, who are nursing staff, can actually sign up to be a volunteer, and they're vetted, and then we could use their skill sets. So, you know, Alderman Sevigny is right in that we do have some available resources. But I don't know if you follow this a lot, but workforce for healthcare is always a commodity that we have to try to nurture and grow and maintain because they're used for, you know, many, many different services. Certainly, we could look at things like, and we are actively looking at, you know, the possibility of emergency medical responders such as our EMTs and so forth as a potential vaccinator. So all of these things are on the table. I was just happy that we started now. There are Health Departments that have not started yet. So I think, please be patient with us. We're doing the very best we can with the resources that we have and the constraints that we have been able, having to work under. Hoping for more news as we, more good news as we go on, and I'm optimistic that things will ramp up. It will just take some time.
Well, certainly, we have the council chambers to use, and the school system should, you know, move any of their meetings out of that so we could use that large room. And how do they do the observation? I see on TV that people are being given the shots by their, by their driving their car. How do they, they got to sit there for 15 minutes with their car?
There's many different models of doing the vaccine. Of course, ours is, you know, doing a drive-by when we have weather conditions that might not be as, they might be adverse, is a consideration. But I have heard where they do the drive-by, and then they park, and then they're monitored by... by people that circulate in that parking lot. Here, what we do is we've used our clinic room for the vaccination and then the room, one of the conference rooms as an observation area where we have two nurses that observe. We also Chief Klein has agreed to have his staff help us with observation, much like we did during our influenza vaccine clinic. So there are certain things that are very much like our influenza vaccine clinic where we have been able to use that triplex conference room. And it has worked out well and our observation area for that has actually been the lunch area way in the back. And then we've had that manned by an EMT and our safety officer, Todd Drew. So these are all things that we're ramping up to do both here, but again, like I said, really contributing to the max vaccination clinic where we can see many, many more people more efficiently and quickly. So again, we want to be able to offer the vaccine as quickly as we can and as efficiently as we can and then make sure that people get that second dose. But we have to do it within the phases that the state has allowed us to do. And tomorrow we should know more about Phase 1B. So that that's the next stage for us is making sure we get get that going and then making sure that we connect with all of our partners in the region.
Well, you know, certainly 12 an hour is is fine now if we could do that. And that's 80, 90 people a day and then, you know, that's almost four, 500 a week and we're a city of 17,000 people and, you know, it'd be at least 500 people more a week that would be, you know, having the back having the vaccine. So I'm with Alderman Severnick. Anything we can do to move forward at any level is a good thing. Thank you.
Well, yep, we'll be putting together a proposal for you to look at with the funding that we have been allocated just recently. And then also just want to make sure that you understand that our nurses right now, 50% of their time is with the school district in the schools and 50% of the time is at the health department. And so we have to make sure that we augment that workforce. We sure don't want to burn them out and we can't take them away from their work in the schools at this time either. And they have been absolutely amazing. They love to vaccinate, so they have been thrilled that they have this opportunity. But we can only do so much. So that's where we'll be looking at scaling up and getting things going. Again, with within our health department and with our neighboring partners.
All right. Thank you, Nancy.
Yep, you're welcome.
Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Severnick?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve Minutes A through G and Communication H.
Second.
Is a motion a second? Is there any discussion? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing no one, we'll move on to Item G, Public Comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak at this time?
Hello, Sandra of the Bill Taylor 545 Broad Street. Can you hear me tonight?
Loud clear.
Yes, we got you.
Alderman Severnick and Taylor comments regarding the COVID environment. Unfortunately, it doesn't appear that the city health department is their hands are tied by the state. And unfortunately, the state of Wisconsin appears to be well behind other states such as Arizona and Florida. Actually, the governor of Florida is concerned now that they will be coming to COVID vacation spots in northern states to people traveling to Florida specifically for the vaccination. We need to be doing something on a massive scale. And I would suggest that the city actually look into the vacant shop building similar to what Mina did for voting. An area that they could rent to do a large scale vaccination with plenty of social distancing and that would not hinder anyone at City Hall or expose anyone at City Hall or the school district to any viruses and keep everything in one location. And that is more centrally located. But other than that, I do feel in a way it seems unfortunately unfortunate that even though we do have our own health department, by being tied in with these other communities, we're not any farther ahead. That Outagame County and Calumet County and Mina Fox Crossing are going to get vaccination sooner or at the same time as we look. So I don't really see the benefit. But that's not a criticism for our health department. It's just the way things are turning out. Then on to the agenda. First of all, the check register. There's quite a few things in there. I'm not going to go through them, but I would like to emphasize that, and this happens all the time, that I don't believe any check should be issued until after the council approves the register. Over and over again, I hear of how the check already went out. So that should be something that is looked into. Again, repeating from the last couple of weeks, the Strong Neighborhood Program is again on the agenda. Again, I'm opposed to this program in implementation, not concept. I don't think it is. There's just too many things that are wrong with the program to have it go forward and I would hope that once these dollars are expended, it's not removed. I won't go into the details. You've heard it all before. I again, for I think the third time since the beginning of the year, the chairman of personnel does not seem interested. So I will ask any member of the council to put on a forthcoming agenda the option of soliciting legal services to represent the city of Manassas in the next term. A request for proposal. To emphasize again, our neighboring communities use a legal team experiencing all facets of municipal law and due to that, we are landlocked. That's just one example of where a legal team will better serve us than one individual city attorney. One thing I would like to bring up is a drive up. I've mentioned this a long time ago. I actually spoke to the school superintendent regarding this. I recently paid city of Mina taxes and it was so convenient to drive up to the building, pay the taxes and go on my merry way. Unfortunately, the city and the school district do not have a drive up. I believe the school district should install one, not only for the benefit of the city to drop off tax bills, voting ballots and any registrations for park and rec or anything else that has gone, pick up documents, maybe not being exposed to anyone inside the building or vice versa. But the school district would greatly benefit by parents with children that don't have to unbuckle them from their car seats and drag everybody in there, the elderly and the disabled. It's something that should be looked into. I talked to the school superintendent about it and they kind of just brushed it off. But you, as a tenant of that building who paid over $400,000 for the original remodeling plus around $70,000 a year for rent, should say something and put in a few words that that would be a benefit, especially under these COVID times, because apparently this is going to be going on for at least another year. Speaking of COVID times, I would strongly like to suggest every meeting you suspend, I'm not sure of the exact language, but you suspend things in order to have a virtual meeting. I think all meetings, Plan Commission, Park and Rec, Redevelopment Authority, all of those should be held virtually. And also, all of those should be recorded. Not only does it serve the members of those committees, but definitely the public. And by reporting them and posting them online, people at any time can view them or put in their input. To expect people to come down to City Hall for an hour here or an hour there is kind of ridiculous. We we made an amendment for the fire department last year. We're going to be on, I think it's personnel. You want to make an amendment for sick leave. You make amendments for everything else, but you can't make a one simple amendment to allow people to attend meetings virtually. And with that, I will let you go. Thank you. Oh, no, the very last thing, the audit under administration. I am disappointed that, who was it? No. The people that actually did the audit, I don't have their names here handy, are not here to explain it. But my first question is why is this from 2019? Is that typical to have this audit come out two years after the fact? And then are we in such financial straits as it appears to be that we have more liabilities than we have assets? This never brought brought up during the past election. So I'd like some clarification if I'm reading this wrong. And with that, have a good night. Thank you.
Mayor, there was Kimberly that wanted to speak.
I see her up on the screen right now. But I don't hear her, unfortunately.
She needs to put her mic on or or call in or whatever.
I see her on the phone, but I'm not sure that's because she can't.
Kimberly, can you turn her up if you wanted to speak?
So Kimberly, if you logged in, you need to choose the computer as your as your choice to have, or if you don't have a microphone, then you have to use the call in number. So I did see your note here that you would like to speak, but we can't hear you.
Mayor, she just sent me a text or or whatever with that chat thing we have, and she said she'll try next month.
Okay.
I don't know who she is.
She she is running for, I believe, Circuit Court Judge.
Okay, okay. All right. She said she'll try next time.
Okay. Okay, seeing no one else. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any items that you'd like to have separated?
Mayor?
Yes.
I'm just going to go through them all.
Okay. Do we have a motion for the common council meeting then?
All right, Mayor. At this time, I'll move that we approve the common council minutes of 1/4 of 2021.
I'll second that.
So motion a second?
Mayor, can you put can you put those on the screen?
We have been requested to have the faces on the screen. If I put the minutes on the screen, you won't be able to see the faces. So I'm not sure which ones the council wants.
I would like to see the the agenda in front of us.
So while the next meeting, we could I'll set out a survey and we'll see what the council wants and we can move on from there.
James, you don't have a copy of the minutes? Or the agenda? No, okay.
So you can switch the screens and do that.
There's also a way of getting it on your screen. Okay. I don't have a problem. Anyone else have a problem with? Are you able to flip back and forth, Mayor?
I'm not sure how I would flip. I could, but it's pretty difficult to do that. Actually, it would have to be Haley that would do it otherwise.
Okay, let's let's move forward. Right now, it's just the common council minutes to approve.
If you want a hard copy, we can get that for you in the future, James. Do you have that?
Oh, I don't.
So is there any discussion on the common council minutes? Seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Do we have a motion for the contract with Spielberg Fireworks?
Yes, Mayor.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the two-year contract with Spielberg Fireworks for 2021 and 2022 Community Fest Firework Show with an added provision that if the show is canceled due to COVID, the deposit held by Spielberg would be applied to the 2022 show and there would be no cancellation fee for the 2021 show.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item three is a change order with MCC. Is there a motion?
I'd like to motion, Mayor, to approve the change order to for MCC Inc., contract unit number 2019-04. That's for the new street construction and rehabilitation. It's an add of $23,755.05. Change order number two is Corey here?
I'll second that.
So motion a second. Is there discussion? Mark, did you have discussion?
I do not.
Does any anyone have discussion? Actually, if I share my screen like this, I can't see all of your pictures now. So we're going to go back this way. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Severnick?
Mayor, just flip back and forth. That shouldn't be a problem. Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
The problem is if I have that up, I can't see who wants to talk.
You're not able to manage it, Mayor. You should be able to manage it. So when when the screen is up, you're able to have it up after the motion's been made and saw and flip back to the regular screen so you can see everybody. Very simple.
I can't see who wants to make a motion if you do that, Stan. That's the problem.
Wait for the motion first, then bring it up on.
We will. We're just going to continue like this and we'll get James a hard copy. We'll get you all hard copies if that's what you need.
You know, in the future, that's fine, Mayor, but I didn't know that in all our other meetings, we've been having that up here, so I've been relying on that.
I can't run the meeting like that. I can't see what's going on, unfortunately.
Go ahead, Mark.
All right. I don't even know where we are anymore.
Payment number four is for MCC Inc., contract unit number 2019-04. That's for the new street construction rehabilitation. That's an add of 20, no, no.
Yeah, it's the same amount.
It's it's, yeah, yeah, yeah. It's further rehab for the amount of $23,755.05 and 5 cents. That is payment number five and final.
I'll second that.
So motion a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing Alderman Nichols?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was ready to vote.
Okay, could we have a roll call vote then, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Severnick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item five is the Personnel Committee Recommendations. Do we have a motion? Alderman Gotti?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the reclassification of the public health aid position to the public health office coordinator with the salary range schedule of $21.22 per hour. to the public health office coordinator with the salary range schedule of $21.22 per hour through the amount of $26.58 per hour, matching that of similarity of the deputy clerk and the finance.
Second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Randy, did you have discussion?
No, no, I didn't.
Okay. Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevanik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item A is J is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for January 1st, 2021 through January 14th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of January 1st through January 14th in the amount of $7,201,934.84.
I'll second.
So motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing.
I have a question, yes. Um, I'm on combined page two. Near the bottom. There is a check. It's check number 70406 to Kimberly Massey for a facade grant at 230 Main Street. And I went back to look at the Landmarks Committee Agenda and Minutes and noticed that this was for window film for for UV protection. So I'm hoping Director Schrader could tell us a little more about this.
I'm sorry, I was waiting for the camera to come on. Yeah, so this was a grant application for 230 Main Street. This is the new location for the Dr. Seuss Collection. That that application did go in front of our Landmarks Committee at the end of September. I was not present at that meeting, but certainly Chair of that meeting, Tom Alderman Gotti, Tom Gotti could certainly fill in if there's additional details that are requested.
Well, I do have another question. Typically, the facade grant applications are for the exterior improvements to buildings. And this certainly does not fit the the case. And so I'm I'm wondering how we've ventured into a new practice here.
I I believe it was looked at similar to a replacement of a window. And it was kind of needed for that business. And I believe it's tied to kind of the cultural significance of that application. We did take a look today, you know, at the 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 grant, the overview of the grant. And myself and Planner Stevenson did kind of note that maybe we want to tighten that up and bring that forward for discussion at future common council meetings. I believe staff was not in favor of that grant application approving that. But again, that was the overall Landmarks Committee that did approve that.
I think this is rather, in my opinion, unfortunate. I'm I'm disappointed. This is a significant change in the in past practice. And I hope that in the future, these applications come to the committee with recommendations from staff similar to what already happens at the common council level, Plan Commission, the Housing Authority, et cetera.
May I chime in here?
Sure, Alderman Gotti.
We did spend quite a bit of time hashing this over. And the element of cultural preservation was the major key in securing this grant. The collection that is housed in this building is over a million dollars. And any sunlight would destroy it. So keep trying to keep this element within the city. Again, saving another empty building, which would just sit there. We took the initiative to be a little creative with our policy, which I see no reason or anything negative with the the outcome of this. I think it's a positive entity with the city and for the community. And we decided to take a chance. Manisha sits on their hands so many times, wondering what to do, how to do this. And by the time it's time to do something, the opportunity is gone.
Thank you, Mayor. Back in the early 1980s, I, my Alderman Taylor and Greg Kyle, we went to Madison, Wisconsin. And this is how this facade restoration program came about. We created an ordinance to provide facade restoration to the fronts of buildings. And it was always $1,500 on the front. And if you were on a corner, you could get $1,500 on the other side, but that was it. The amount here, number one, is for $2,323.40. My question is, did they put a film on or did they completely replace the window? If they replaced the window, that is a facade change. If not, then the committee made an error, in my opinion, of being one of the original authors of this facade restoration grant, allowing for this grant to go through. So Sam, is this a replacement of an entire window or a film process or what? And is it on the inside or the outside? Because this has always been strictly the outsides of your building.
Again, it is my understanding that it is a film treatment. And I would have to defer to the Chair of the Committee to that approval.
Tom, do you?
Yes, it was.
Total replacement of the windows or was it?
There were a film to keep the UV rays from entering the interior space.
Were those applied on the outside or on the inside?
That I don't know. I assumed it was the inside.
Yeah, then it then it's wrong.
And it is 2,500 for facade, not 15.
You're right. You're right.
You wrote this, right?
Yeah, 25, 25. So, okay, and the amount was was okay. Yep, 23. All right, well. I don't know how I feel about this. I I guess I need an answer. Was it was it a film that was applied on the inside of the building? Was it a replacement of windows? And to me, if it was a replacement of windows, that would have been okay. If it was applied on the outside of the building, that may have been okay also. That's all I got, I guess.
Is there any other discussion? Alderman Taylor?
I would like to say two of this was always for the exterior of the buildings. Everybody knows that. And was there a was there a receipt that was submitted for this from an outside company that put the film on? Apparently, that must have cost $4,600, because this is a matching grant.
That is correct, yes.
So was there a receipt that was turned in for $4,600?
Yes.
Okay. And I agree with Alderman Sevanik. You know, this is a advisory committee, Citizens of High Street Committee. And it should have been asked for an amendment to be changed for this. Especially at the committee level. And we all know that it's for exteriors, as Alderman Nichols and Alderman Sevanik said. So we should find out if it's on the inside outside and probably hold the check, hold the payment.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, if we could ever.
Mayor, do we need to separate that?
I Attorney Captain, do we do they have authority to observe the Landmarks Commission?
Oh, no, we have the authority over the dollars, period.
You gave the Landmarks Commission authority to grant, make grants with those dollars.
Hopefully, you didn't send the check out because it shouldn't be approved until we say yes.
You can separate that check if you would like.
The council did approve the rules for the facade grants, and this isn't part of the rules.
I believe that the Landmarks Commission felt that it was within the parameter.
That's not what the issue here, Mayor, is as much. They may have done that, but right now we're talking about whether that should be paid or not. Because we have additional information to find out that Tom wasn't sure if it was on the outside or the inside. And as I said before, if it's on the outside, I'm okay with that. If it's on the inside, I'm not okay with that.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to hold this check till the next meeting.
Is there a second? Motion? There's a motion and a second. Although, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Gotti?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevanik?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries five, three.
So we have the remainder of the checks at this point?
And Mayor?
Alderman Sevanik?
Go ahead, Sam, if you had something.
I guess I I would like to share that that policy, maybe possibly at the next meeting then with the common council. Again, as I noted, as discussed today with the Planner Stevenson, if it if it is that direction that we want to very, very firmly tighten up what the projects are eligible and ineligible, I I think we need to do that per the policy. So just for a reference, I I think we should bring that forward in the future to Landmarks as well as to the common council for consideration.
So we have.
I do have several.
Okay.
And I apologize to the council. I didn't have time today to talk to Jennifer, but we did cover one already. So Jennifer, if you're listening in, I have a check 70401. It's a refund, but yet it's like it's for Ruth Hawkinson of $2,527. What is that? Amount for.
Sam, do you have that one?
Yeah, I can take that. What that is, is there was a basically a loan out there to to this individual. She had came in to pay off that loan during our crisis, if you will, in December. So we didn't have records of the exact dollar amount. And she had overpaid. So that is just basically a refund. So nothing too alarming there.
Okay, thank you, Sam. The next one is check 704112. That's the Diane for processing fees of $962.33. Jennifer, do you want to explain that? And if I'll let you explain first.
I believe those are for her credit card. Is that correct, Megan?
Yes, you are correct. For her contract, we have a 6040 split on credit card processing fees.
Okay, thank you. I was not aware of that. I thought if someone was in business, they paid for their own processing fees. But if that's part of the contract, I appreciate that. Next one is for check 70417. It's $5,000. It's probably for Sam also for 94 Broad Street.
This is the Strong Neighborhoods Program.
Okay, what is the 5,004?
You'll have to just give me a minute to look up that specific.
It's for Levi?
So it would have been a curb appeal. So it would have been an approved application that came forward. The specifics of that application is what I guess I'm looking for. But it is a it would be a curb appeal or exterior project that was approved.
Okay, all righty, thank you. I assumed that. I just was hoping it wasn't an after the fact that they purchased the place and then came in and got 5,000 for first time home buyer or something. Okay.
If you if you will see, so CU, we have been coding that specifically for the council within the packets. So first time home buy would be FTHB. CU is curb appeal, MU is major renovation or MR, excuse me. So that's why that is coded that way so we can track that in that fashion.
Okay. Jennifer, there's check 70426. Sugi Lock and Door for this for the senior center for a door. And the cost was $4,234. We haven't used the senior center, basically, and we're paying $4,000 for some type of door or door repair or change. It seems quite high. Again, that's check 70426.
Jennifer, I can answer that.
Okay, I have the invoice out here otherwise.
That was on the replacement schedule, so it was the two doors facing Main Street or closest to Main Street. They were on a replacement schedule, so it was completely new doors that were put in this year.
We have a not sure who this is for, but we detailed the car, the one of the Ford Explorers for almost $200. Check 2729 for $184.99, so 185 bucks. Detailing of a car.
What check was that again?
I'm sorry, I think I have 2729. It's for clear water car wash.
Just start with the seven, Stan.
Yeah, that would be a police department express.
Assuming that, but that's okay, go ahead, Chief.
So what they end up doing is we have an account with them. So while it wasn't just one vehicle, they bill us every so often, as far as the number of vehicles that we put out there. Generally, we do our washes every so often. If someone has a accident, shall we say, on the vehicle, then we do need to get it detailed and cleaned out that way.
I was just hoping you weren't getting the car detailed to go visit the governor or something.
No.
All righty. And then this one might be for the fire chief. Those the payment to the city of Nina for check number 70464. It's a daily boat launch. And the total amount there, and it's from a trust fund or a fund. It's for $4,255. There, Jennifer, the chief, have you got something on that?
I'm just pulling something out here.
Okay. And I only have two more. I promise that next time this won't happen, because I usually call Jennifer ahead of time.
This one here for the city of Nina was in starting in 2017, we increased our daily boat launch fees by a dollar. And then that money would be sent to the city of Nina to be placed in a trust. for the water rescue budget, I believe.
So basically, we're, we're charging ourselves a dollar to put into a trust fund to fund the rescue. Kevin, your mic's not coming through, so what I'll do is I'll call you.
Okay, so can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear your dog.
Sorry.
Someone probably came in here all at the same moment, huh?
They did, yes.
Murphy's Law.
Yeah, so I, I believe that happened right as I was, I became chief where there was an agreement that I think to help fund part of the dive team, maintenance of the dive team, both Nina and Manash should do like a certain percentage of the boat launch fees. And I think it gets put into our trust fund and used for maintenance and equipment.
Okay, I, I'm on Nina Manash Fire Rescue, and I was not aware of this. So, all righty. Sounds like a, a plan. Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
The next one would be Town and Country Title. What title, and maybe this one's for Sam again, what title services are we using? At this point.
What was the check number, Alderman Sevenick?
Seven, zero, four, seven, nine. It's for six thousand five hundred and sixty-four dollars. It's for Town and Country Title LLC.
I believe these were refunds for overpayments on property taxes.
So this is a re, as a refund, or we're paying? Okay.
Right, we had already received a payment and then had gotten an additional payment from the title company for two properties.
All right, thank you. The last thing I have is probably for everyone at Public Works and the police department with the QuickTrip fuel costs that we've been experiencing. Hopefully with the new city garage, once, when is that going to be fully operational? The bill that we have been paying at QuickTrip has been quite high, and I'm sure they've been very happy about it. Adam, you have something?
What we were waiting on was the fiber connection at the new facility that was recently put in on Friday. So we are going to test our fuel pumps and our, our fuel monitoring system. So hopefully we'll get that up and running here shortly.
Okay, thank you. Also, thank you, council, for giving me this opportunity. I always hated when other council members did this. It's just that I never got around to getting ahold of Jennifer. So, thank you.
Seeing no one else, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries on roll call eight, zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty, like, two thousand twenty-one licensing period as listed in the clerk's memo dated January fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second that.
So motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
We have a motion for item three. Alderman Nichols?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'll move for the approval of the Class A liquor license application for KN LLC doing business as Manasha Marathon at two oh nine Racine Street for the remainder of the two thousand twenty through two thousand twenty-one licensing year.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
You forgot to read the name.
Any discussion? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item four is the Strong Neighborhoods Program. Is there a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to recommend that we accept the Strong Neighborhoods Program, which was amended at the council workshop on December seventh, two thousand twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Sevenick?
Mayor, if, I'd like to offer an amendment, then if we're going to proceed. I feel that when the program was put together, the program was put together to take care of the buildings in our community, the housing stock. In other words, windows, doors, porches, siding, roofing, those kinds of things. And there's a part of this that I have always felt uncomfortable about, and that is the money that we put towards first time home buyers. I'd rather give money to people who have paid taxes in this community that want to make changes to their homes than if someone just wants to move into the city of Manasha and gets a free five thousand dollars. So at this point, I'm going to ask that we focus on the important parts of the Strong Neighborhoods Program and eliminate the first home buyers portion of that. That's not part of the firefighters getting the money and city employees entitled to moving into the city for the five thousand.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion, a second. We can discuss the amendment? We have a discussion on the amendment?
The only discussion I would have is like what I said, Mayor. Let's put the money towards people who could use it, not just someone who just moves here that might have money already to buy a home. I'd rather see home improvements done, especially in certain neighborhoods of our community, that spruce enough our community and really, I, I think everyone would feel better about that than just giving out easy money.
Did you have something, Alderman Langdon?
No.
No, Alderman Taylor?
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, if this was the two thousand nine housing bubble or a depressed time or outrageous interest rates, I could see doing this, but this market out there is red hot. And for the median type of income housing out there, the market is red, red hot. And I've had friends and that have been buying houses lately, and if you don't get on that within a day or two, that house is gone. And so I could see having incentive in, 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 in times of a depressed economy, but Alderman Sevenick is right. Right now, we can put our money where, where we see it. Where we see it in our existing homes, and if somebody buys a home, they can certainly access this money too. So I think it's a, it's a good motion. Thank you.
Alderman Grady?
No, thank you, Mayor. My, my question would be for Sam. Of the five thousand dollar first time home buyer, is there a cap on that as to, hey, we're only going to put away X amount for this part of the Strong Neighborhoods? Or could that whole five thousand, how many other people eat up all the funds just for first time home buyers?
The program, two thousand twenty, was ran on a first time home, or, excuse me, first come, first served basis. So last year, I, Alderman Sevenick did note his concern with this, so I didn't look this up. Last year, we did approve six of these applications, so totaling thirty thousand dollars out of the roughly three hundred thousand dollars. So we had six five thousand dollar applications. And I believe the, the, the thought process around this initially was to, to promote owner occupied housing, to try and sway it away from rental properties and to really try to get that, that family or that first time home buyer to settle into Manasha because we know, the council knows, we speak of this all the time, once, you know, once somebody actually lives in the city of Manasha, we feel like they do fall in love with the community and all the assets that we do have. So make them a long-term resident versus just renting in the city. But again, I could go either way. I'm not going to be heartbroken if this does get cut from the program.
The only other thought I had too, though, I can see if it's existing home and it's a first time home buyer, you know, they don't get to five thousand because the taxes still have to get paid on that property, and that's going to the person listed in the home. So we're giving an incentive for people to sell their home and get out of Manasha because somebody can come in and buy a house for five thousand. I like the idea of it's brand new construction, maybe five thousand, but I'll honor Alderman Sevenick's thought process here and agree with his thoughts.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote just on the amendment?
Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Nay.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries six, two.
So we have the motion as amended now. Is there more discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. The program was originally, one of the ideas behind the program was to assist folks who don't necessarily qualify for our community development block grant program or other income qualifying programs that we have here in Manasha. But also might need a little bit of a, of a boost. They might not be able to get a home equity line of credit or have a project in mind that they need a little bit more for but don't have the means to finance that. And so with this new amended program raising the minimum project value to twenty thousand dollars, I'm concerned that it's, it's going to miss folks that could use the assistance. And so my amendment is to maintain the maximum project value of fifteen thousand dollars.
Second.
Is that the minimum project value?
Maximum project, uh, to, to maintain the minimum project, the minimum project value, correct, Sam?
This is just for the major renovations under A eligible properties. We had AD, I guess, minimum project value previously was fifteen thousand dollars. We did discuss, you know, the considerations of the common council throughout this last year and looking at more comprehensive projects, getting a larger investment out of the funds. So we did look to basically increase that to twenty thousand dollars. That is, when you start to look at a, a all-inclusive comprehensive project, it is pretty easy to get to that twenty thousand dollars, but we wanted to make sure we were capitalizing on this, on this program, this, these investments, these dollars that, that the city of Manasha is putting into this. But again, it's, this would be up to the common council for consideration. Staff did put that in as a recommendation based upon our understanding of where the common council wanted to go with the program.
Yeah, it, so my amendment is to maintain the minimum project value of fifteen thousand dollars.
And there was a second as well, correct? Alderman Sevenick, did?
Correct.
Any discussion on the amendment? Seeing no discussion on the amendment, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Nay.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Nay.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Mark, you didn't have your mic on. We couldn't hear you.
Sorry. Aye.
Motion carries six, two.
So we have the motion as amended on the floor. Are there any, is there any other discussion? Seeing no other discussion, if we could have a roll call vote on the motion as amended?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Repella?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye, with the understanding that this can always change down the road.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Motion carries eight, zero.
Item five is the ad hoc downtown, downtown, and we mislabeled it. It was supposed to say Holiday Lights Committee. Alderman Repella?
Oh.
You turned your mic off, Randy. There you go.
Thank you, Mayor. We should be, we should be ready to go on Wednesday. We've got magazines, we've got fired up group that we're going to try to figure out the holiday lighting in Manasha. So it's all good.
Did you want to make the motion to approve the committee and members?
Definitely. I'll make a motion to approve the Holiday Lighting Committee for City of Manasha for two thousand twenty-one.
Including the members as listed on the memo?
Including the members as listed on the memo.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
So motion, a second. Is there any other discussion? James?
Good luck.
Mister Chairman, Randy of the committee, I would hope that we can have this. I know we're going to have it virtual, but I would like to have it that we can see each other and that possibly, like Sandra said, we should record it. So I hope we can ramp up the, the technology. Thank you.
Okay.
We will do our best, James.
Did you have discussion too, Ted?
I just wanted clarification that it's Alderman Tom Grady, in case I moved to District Six.
I don't know if we could sneak you in there?
It was both Alderman Graddys. Seeing no further discussion, if we could have a roll call vote, please?
Alderman Schmidt?
Aye.
Alderman Tom Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Ted Grady?
Aye.
Alderman Nichols?
Aye.
Alderman Taylor?
Aye.
Alderman Sevenick?
Aye.
Alderman Langdon?
Aye.
Alderman Schmidt? Oh, I'm sorry. Motion carries eight, zero.
I never voted.
Aye.
We knew there was one that we missed, right?
The one person too. Yep. Thanks, Haley.
Item always public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to make a comment at this time?
Sandra DeBille Taylor, five forty-five Broad Street. I'd like to make a few comments regarding the Strong Neighborhoods Program. I appreciate both of the amendments. I appreciate both of the amendments made by Alderman Sevenick and Alderman Nichols. Again, I unfortunately, I am disappointed that elected officials can still benefit from this program. The elected officials that just voted on this program. I think that's a disservice to the community. I also am disappointed that this is a free grant and it is not a reimbursement loan. Or a low interest loan or a no interest loan. This is just free money. I'm also concerned that the major renovation is eligible for. Or I'm sorry, the conversion. I don't know how many have taken place, but the conversion of a. Existing duplex into an original single family residential is allowable for investors. That they would then again turn around and make it a rental. I think that defeats the purpose of trying to attract. Single family homeownership in the city, that we're just perpetuating a rental community. There's so many things wrong with this. I'm also disappointed that the. The latest amendment removes the Housing Authority's authority. To approve the curb. Curb appeal grants, and it's put primarily in the hands of community development. And may I remind you, those are two individuals that don't live in the city. And even as Sam, Sam mentioned. With the first time homeowners. That was an incentive to have people come and live and learn about this wonderful community of Manasha, but he doesn't live here.
Mrs. Taylor, would you not disparage our staff?
I'm not threatening, I'm just speaking the facts.
I said disparage.
To this program, it has gotten out of control. It's a free for all at taxpayer expense. This is not federal money or state money. This was supposed to go back to the taxpayers as part of the closure of a tip. Thank you and have a good night.
I don't believe there's anyone else, but if there's anyone else who'd like to make a comment from the public? Seeing no one, if there's a motion to adjourn, I would accept that.
Mayor, motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We are adjourned, thank you.